But we exit executive session?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, I'm going to certify that your best of earned knowledge-
Got to exit first.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Got a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, Mr. Gibson, would you care to certify?
Madam Chairman, I'm going to certify that your best of earned knowledge on public business, Madam Smollett exempted from the open meeting departments, and only such public business matters as for identifying the motion going into executive session or are discussed or considered in executive sessions. Those being 2.2-3, 177A1, 2.231, 3711, Page 7, and 2.2-3711, Page 8.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Zaccaria?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
And Miss Garrett? And Miss Sopius? So, can Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, once every year, we look at reorganization of the board where we examine those that are leading the board and determine any changes there that may be needed or wanted. We also look at managerial and logistical evaluation there and changes again that may be wanted, and we give also committee assignments and any changes that may be needed or wanted there. That being said, Madam Chair, I will open the board meeting with a request from our board members as far as nominations for chairman for the calendar year of 2021.
I like the motion that Mr. Compton be chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
Thank you.
Just say, any others for chair? Okay, here now, I'll close the, I'll close that nomination. Again, thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a motion to accept Mr. Compton as chairman for the 2021 calendar year?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Superintendent.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zaccaria. Do we have a second? All right, thank you, Miss Garrett. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Madam Chair, and the floor is yours.
And thank you, thank the board members for your thorough competence, and I appreciate them out there for you. Thank you. Okay, this time, I'll take a motion to nominate a vice chairman. I'd like to nominate Richard Barton. Kathy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. All in favor, Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Stu? Mr. Wallstic? Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And Miss Sopius? Now, we need to take a sec. School board clerk. And do you have a motion?
Tammy.
Gilbert.
Miss Gilbert, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for what you do for us, and we really appreciate it. Now, first, the board attorney. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to recommend that we keep the chief of law firm.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
I'd like to do an interim on it just for a while.
Okay. We can do it for an interim, maybe a couple months.
Well, we have a motion and a second. We have a willingness to withdraw those motions in a second.
I understand, okay.
Is that fine?
There's a motion and a second on the board, but there can also be subsidiary motions to, or to amend the motion or to table it or anything like that, so if you all want to have a discussion, that's perfectly acceptable.
For clarification, Mr. Parsons, are you saying you'd like to do this on an interim basis for month by month or three months at a time until divorce?
Just a few months and talk about, make the say everything.
Madam Chairman, there's a motion and a second on the floor, I just want to move.
If I may, the school board-
Ask nothing against you, Kathy.
I understand, Mr. Parsons, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that even if you do select a law firm at the organizational meeting, this board always has the right to seek other counsel. You can always do an RFP, or that is actually not even required, to hire another attorney. You can do it on an interim basis, that would require an amendment to the motion, so there would have to be a majority that would agree to amend that motion. But I guess I just don't want the board to think that if you do select a law firm tonight, that there's no ability to change it for the next organizational meeting, because that would not be correct.
Let's just, let's just. Okay, we got a second. All in favor, the Mr.?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Kathy.
And if nothing is, you've got the, Kathy, I promise.
Okay. I need a motion to approve of our operational mandate, and-
Professor Harvis' Rules of Order, Madam Chair, traditionally, most school divisions do operate, most government entities operate under Professor Harvis' Rules of Order. That would be the recommendation from the superintendent.
Okay, do I have a motion that we accept Robert's rules?
So do I, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. You have a second? Thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting date for our school board meetings presently, it's the first Thursday at 5:00.
So do I, Madam Chair.
Is that good for everyone?
Yeah, ma'am.
Thank you. Got a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, for our insurance committee, I appreciate the work that Mr. Wallstic has done over his time with our school board, and also Mr. Gibson. Would you two gentlemen care to-
I'd rather be on it now than I have been.
At least you've got us in the, you've got us in the, got us up to some money there in more than one, since you go there for a while. Thank you. Good job. And last, to the board supervisors, I would like to ask Mr. Zaccaria if he need, if Dr. Brown needs a good school board person to go with him, that he would represent us?
Sure, that's good.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, the governor's school, Ms. Garrett, if you wouldn't care to do that, you didn't have much opportunity last year with COVID, so maybe, maybe things will get better soon, we hope. If you would do that. Thank you. Our budget committee, I would like Mr. Parsons and Mr. Ball, if you two gentlemen would care to help us with our budget. I feel like you both would be an asset to the board. If at any time that any of you are not able to attend your assignments, you know, if you'll let me know, I'll be glad to go and be your alternate, just that way we can keep the board all informed. Is that okay with you, Mr. Ball?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. As a school board, we will have our conduct code would be under the DSBK, and we'll need to stand that tonight.
That's something that Madam Clerk can add to the board in the meeting, we can have that, we're excited that one.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Brown. And at this time, we need to approve the board and the board. Okay, we need to approve. I have a motion to approve the conduct code.
So do I.
Yes. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we will stand for a moment of silence and remember Senator Meacham, and also Mr. Becker, and the many other, the many other residents of Russell County and across our nation that have passed away due to this terrible virus. If you look, notice that the funeral homes, you know, seem like past years, you could look and there would be a couple, maybe two people weep or something, and nowadays, we see maybe two or three one day, so anyway, let's have a moment of silence for those. Can we thank you? And Mr. Parsons, would you care to give us the invocation, and after that, I'll ask Mr. Zaccaria to give us a pledge.
Yes, ma'am. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for this day you've given us, Lord. Thank you for the will we receive, Lord, and please bless those hands that prepare the Lord. And, Lord, we ask you to please be with each of us and help us make these tough decisions, Lord, that we have to make during this time, Lord. We know that there's a reason, we don't know what it is, but we know that you have a reason for everything. Lord, we just beg you to please watch out for our military and all of our first responders, Lord, our police officers, and just please protect them and their families, Lord, and keep them safe, and just be with us, lead God direct us in each thing we do, Lord, that we will do it for you and for our kids, the better of our kids and our teachers, and all around us, Lord, and our community. Thank you again, Lord, for sending your son to die on the cross for us, and just everything you do for us each day, Lord, we fail short and forget to praise you for it. Jesus, now I pray.
Yes, and I do.
Congratulations. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Dr. Brown, do we have any adjustments to our agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to add one action item in dealing with the potential extension of the FFCRA, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Again, the board's information that was put in place in April, and it was designed to help support our employees in the event that they are quarantined through defined means or isolated through defined means in regards to COVID and not having a negative impact on their leave time, et cetera. That program was exhausted and so forth on December 31st, and I'd like to have that added as an action item, Madam Chair, and I'll speak to what that action item will be at that time.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Brown. Any approval to finalize our agenda?
So do I, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Zaccaria. All in favor?
Aye.
Any approval of amendments? I can ask for-
So do I, Madam Chair.
Without further, thank you, Mr. Ball. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Brown, do we have any recommendations this evening?
Yes, ma'am, I would ask Mr. Pleasure Assistant Superintendent to come forward and lead that part of the program.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Madam Chair members, we're going to play tonight to bring to you our employees of the month. The committee has made their selection for January, and I'm happy to present to you our support person, employee of the month, is Peggy Vance. She is the helper of Mr. Gill. Jerry's with you, we'll bring him in here too. Come on, Jerry. And our teacher of the month, Ms. Kayla Stillburn. Kayla's at Lebanon Primary School. This is long since her regrets that she wasn't able to attend tonight, but she also wants to be sure that she sends her congratulations to her teacher. Let me read a little bit about Peggy's nomination. It says Peggy is such a hard worker and will do anything asked of her. She goes above and beyond her job description. She never hesitates to volunteer to help someone out. And working in this office, I can attest to that, and I think all of us can attest to that, she's wonderful. Brown? Kayla's nomination says Kayla is our son's special education teacher. We feel that someone in her position, working with our child daily, takes a unique individual. We appreciate her. Thank you, Ms. Stillburn.
I'll take that.
Thank you, I'll take that.
Thank you. Delegation's on the agenda, Dr. Brown.
Madam Chair, we, seeing no communication from anyone outside of the office, I'd like to address the board. We'll have another delegation on the agenda available at the end of our program.
Thank you, sir. Does the board have an opportunity to look at the bills? Do you have any question or anything over the net, only the kind of motion that we pay our bills? Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Zaccaria. All in favor? Dr. Brown, does Texas do air resignation or retirement?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one for the board's consideration tonight, retirement.
Do I have a motion that we adjourn?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair, to accept the retirements as presented.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor? Hey, Dr. Brown, are new personnel or transfers?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have a small list for the board's approval tonight. Athlete Coates is a custodial position.
So, a motion to leave?
So do I.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dr. Brown, the approval of our special education advisory committee?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have a committee that needs board's approval for the coming year. Names and such will provide for the board's consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. I'd like to have a motion that we add a member from our board to that. We have Miss Garrett, and also, I would like to, but I'll need a motion for someone to add, Mr. Ball.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Need a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Zaccaria, and thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor?
Aye.
No, you can't take out, wrong.
He looks into it, Kathy.
He will, but he'll be good.
Madam Chair, we have a second item, again, that we shared at the beginning as an addition of our agenda, I'm sorry, grade.
That was to add someone to the list. Now, I think they need to bring that show list.
That'd be great.
Yes, we'll prove that list. All in favor of the advisory committee with the addition to Mr. Wayne Ball to that?
We'll need to get my motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. A second. Thank you, Miss Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Brown?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a second item again that we added at the beginning of the agenda, and that is a discussion and an opportunity and a recommendation from a committee to extend the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Again, this act was imposed, brought into law in April, and that has been a very positive thing for our employees. It's created an environment where employees felt comfortable coming forward, sharing, you know, situations in the event that they were quarantined through medical defined means or isolated. This act, again, basically said, you know, we appreciate you sharing that, being honest with us, and we will follow the medical guidelines and so forth established, and with that being said, we will not penalize you by taking sick days away from you during this. School divisions around are extending this offering. I would like to recommend that the board consider extending it through March 31st, then we can reevaluate to see if we need to continue that. Maybe, maybe not, but hopefully, at that point in time, we'll be in a much better place, and we can at least have a better idea of what the next three months looks like from there.
Yes. Do I have a motion that we extend that?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Miss Garrett. All in favor? Okay, Dr. Brown?
Madam Chair, on the information line, again, we've had coronavirus update for the last several months, and there are some very positive things to share now, so hopefully we are seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. With that being said, we, again, have Chromebooks now, all of them are out, those have been distributed, again, with our iPads as well, so we're one of the few school divisions now in state that, or excuse me, in this part of the state, that have basically electronic devices now available, K through 12 for our students, so we're going to be working on professional development and having those things distributed. In addition to that, we did have a Zoom meeting today with the interim director for the Cameron Plateau, Dr. Shelton, the director for the Mount Rogers District, and it's a very, very positive meeting. We believe we may have vaccines available for employees in the very near future. I'll learn more tomorrow, so it's very, very encouraging. We've all been looking for something positive in regards to this, and this could be that thing. So, we have communicated to our employees the opportunity and secured information as far as who would and would not like to have the vaccine, so we have reported that information to VDH, and we will hopefully get some guidance tomorrow on exactly when we can look at starting that process. So, we're very encouraged for that, and, again, hopefully, something positive in the dark time we're living in right now. Madam Chair, that's what I have for coronavirus.
Thank you, sir. Our sales tax for December was 402,354.32. ADM through November the 30th, 2020 was 3302. The maintenance report, I guess everybody's had an opportunity to get it, expenditure report. Future agenda items?
Madam Chair, we shared last month that we would be bringing the calendar items for the board for their consideration, but we wanted to, again, secure input from our staff, teachers, and so forth concerning that, so we're still waiting on feedback, so we will have that for the board with February meeting, and hopefully, we can return to a more traditional school calendar. At that point in time, for board's approval, but that's all we have at the moment.
Delegation's not on the agenda?
Be more than happy to turn the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Ms. Compton, I'm with the board. My name is Captain Hughes, and I'm the regional representative at the Department of Professional Educators, and I'd just like to take this opportunity to give my condolences for the loss of a great man, Ben Tatum, and I, I think I have this right, and he may not even have forgotten, but back, I guess, four or five years ago, maybe more than that, you know, a lot of the counties were really struggling. It was rough when we first got elected with loss of, loss of enrollment and those kind of things, and I was in Dickinson County, and Mrs. Robinson, the superintendent there, had said that Mr. Chuffin had recommended that they group together, and that, that recommendation, you know, Region 7 made a real difference. We've gotten more funding for our, our students that are, now, I've lost my train, but, but for the students that are, you know, below income, we've got the backup funding for that, and now, that is no longer just Region 7, that is the rural school coalition, which goes across the state, and it gives us a greater voice in Richmond, and it's made a huge, huge, huge difference. And so, I just wanted to say in his home county, how much he'll be missed by all of South West Virginia, and I know it's just, I didn't know personally, other than just to sit aside over now and again, when he did come here, but I think he was a fine man, and I'm so sorry for that loss, so I just wanted to say that publicly in his home, in his home county, so thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice hearing you.
He's truly a friend and a-
Great man.
And just a wonderful person, just a kind individual.
Anyone else like to address the board?
Board members, have any things that you want for the future agenda?
I'd like to say again that I think Dr. Brown's been working hard on this, and through all these terrible times we're having, horrible, and we've never went through before, and I think we watched that, the flight knocked it out, and I will thank you very much.
I'd like to take this opportunity, thanks to the vote based on school, for our meal tonight, the ladies.
Did we discuss our plans about school?
Yes.
That's fine, we can definitely share that as a board of life. In looking forward to the next couple of weeks and speaking with the health department and also other school divisions around us, what I would like to do will be next week, maybe 18th, week of the 18th as well, the next two weeks, we will continue to maintain remote instruction, students returning on the 25th, which will be Monday, and then also, on that week of the 18th, staff will report on Wednesday, but that week of the 18th, hopefully, at that time, we have our vaccinations completed for our employees, hopefully, but it gives a chance to get our teachers back in, and we can be ramped up and prepared for the 25th. So, again, next week will be 100% remote, the 18th as well for our students. Staff will report on Wednesday, which will be the 20th, and report on the 20th, on 22nd, the rest of that week, and then on the 25th, we'll bring students back.
School board meeting will be February the 4th, 2021. Executive session at 5:00. The meeting to follow at 6:30. Do I have a motion that we adjourn?
So do I, Madam Chair.
You always do that one. Do I have a second?
I want to do it real quick, until I have a change of heart.
Where the change of heart? Thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor?
Aye.